Good morning. This is the Lakeland Library Board of Trustees. It is Wednesday, May 22nd. We are meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the Lakeville Public Library Local History Room. And we're going to introduce ourselves in, starting with this gentleman over here.
Patrick Marshall, trustee.
Ruth Gross, trustee.
Jennifer Jones, library director.
Nancy LaFave, trustee chair. We'll start the morning with asking if anyone's taping. And the Lakeham is taping, and we thank them. And we'll go right to the secretary's report. Have all received the report in advance? Is there any discussion on it? additions, deletions, corrections?
I would move to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the April 24th, 2024 minutes.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Two minutes. Then we go to the second item, which is the financial reports. And gifts, have we had any?
No gifts this time. I think we're doing okay with the budget. There's a few items that you'll see are spent down and maybe a little bit spent over. And of course, the water issue again. But otherwise, I think we're in good shape. We will definitely have a good chunk of salary savings. And I'm happy to report that we will meet our materials requirement. We have already met it, so no worries on that. I know there was a little bit of frantic spending because of, you know, how things went with Jamie's end. So, and book ordering. So now we're okay.
So we just have June. And then it's the new fiscal year.
Yeah, I'll put in a few little orders in June, but we are all set. And there's a couple of things I wanted to talk about later in my report. About, or later in the meeting about database additions.
Okay, then we'll move on to director's report, program services and collection, and website upgrade.
Yes, so just briefly, our website is due for renewal. And I wanted to move to the next tier, which will give us a little bit more in terms of service from GoDaddy. It has some integrations for social media, which will help Christina with her marketing. And at the time we were looking at it, it also gave you more pages. But I'm not sure that that's the case now. It's only going to be a $61 increase over the year. So I feel it's a good investment, and it will give us a lot more leeway with the website to develop more pages. And then eventually, what I'd like to do is look at using a different service for the website. But that'll be next year's project of looking into different companies that can do that for us.
Any questions for the director or comments? Yeah. Okay.
So I wanted to note that I've included Teresa's report, as well as she sent a festival update that you can read. And then I'll quickly go through the highlights of my report. One up games visited for Smash Brothers tournament. She had 27 teens and tweens, so I feel like that was a good turnout. She was very pleased with that. Pace playgroup did not go as expected in April. And so the coordinator will be out with another staff member to run the main playgroup. And hopefully, that will get us back on track. This is kind of the trial run. If it doesn't go well, we may have to work on something else. April vacation programs went well with lower attendance than February vacation, because I think people went away. And Teresa's working on finalizing all her summer program materials. And I mentioned she has the arts festival update. And summer reading will start June 18th. The last day of school is interestingly Thursday, June 20th. So I don't think there's going to be a lot of attendance on that.
So last day is the 20th, but we're starting summer reading on June 18th?
Yeah, because the last day of school was supposed to be.
The 19th's the holiday.
And the 19th's the holiday. And they're having a half day on the 20th.
You see people maybe on the 20th.
Yeah, I think I will. Annie Prescott had a small crowd for her poetry reading. And the next local author series event is June 4th, featuring Eric J. Dolan. Novelty's will discuss Spare next week. And 17 members attended April's discussion. There were sort of mixed reviews on the book, though. And Jill Sanford of Art For Your Mind presented a retrospective of famous artworks for why so famous. And we had 20 people attend that. It was really nice. They expressed a wish to have Jill back, so I'm working on a date for 2025, perhaps using some Lakeville Arts Council money. And then we have upcoming programs. Once Upon a Generation is Thursday, May 30th at 6:00 p.m. And then the Beer Can Museum Talk is Tuesday, June 18th at 6:00 p.m. Pest Control Services came back for a second monthly visit, and there was some activity at the bait stations. And they'll return to treat the inside next month. But we've seen a lot of ant activity inside, particularly after they did the spraying outside. So I think they were all trying to escape. And they're still around, but we're trying to get a handle on it. And I think, you know, being proactive right now is pretty good in getting the ants out of the building. The painting contractor stopped by. He's working on a quote for the gazebo and benches. While he was here, I asked him to look at the trellis, and unfortunately, some of the columns are rotted. So we're going to have to look at replacing that in the future. And I know that there are some boards there that are the composites, so they might be able to be reused.
This is would be this, we've replaced a great deal of it. Originally, it was all wood. And then we replaced, not too many years ago, but enough to be about at least 10 years, I think, after it was constructed. We replaced a whole section with composite. So the next thing would be the original wood that didn't deteriorate. Finally, it did decide to deteriorate, so that's not a problem.
What about the lamp posts that were?
The lights?
Paul got an estimate from MB Electrical to do the electrical work. But he really doesn't, I haven't talked about a solution for the posts.
Yeah. I'd like to see that.
So there's two kind of options. You could do the trucks material, but that's going to be very expensive, because you're going to have to dig up whatever's there. Or you could go for the concrete and get some taller bollards.
What's a bollard?
That's the light that's out there. So I had some of those in Mattapoiset, and we had taller ones. So there are ones that are a lot taller that would be that same height. You would just have to put the concrete footing in.
Oh, I see.
Paul's very good about doing footings. He just did the stage.
Yeah, so I mean, if he wants to talk about that.
Maybe it's a joint project.
I don't know if the quote got sent to me or just to him. I'd have to go back in my notes. But MB did send us a quote about fixing up the electrical out there.
Yeah, and we also need to make sure that all the lights are actually functioning, so that they're not overgrown with plant material, which we know that sometimes happens. The other thing that I just want to add in is that I'm going to do the barrels today. And there are two at the fly pole area which need to be replaced. Their rims have decided to drop. And so that's always a sign that the sidewalls are going to go too. So the question is, do we want to continue with two new barrels there, or do we want to not have barrels there? It doesn't matter to me. I don't have a preference.
Flagpole?
Flagpole. We just would have then, just have grass and the pavers and the flagpole. That would all be there.
Are they on, I can't see them. Are they on pavers or on the grass?
They're on the, right on either side of the flagpole.
Right on either side of the pole.
I know, but on paper or grass?
On the pave.
No, pavers.
Okay.
They're right next to.
So it's not like they have to weed whack around them?
No, they're not, no, they're not high end. High work.
I think they're nice, but.
Just so that I know, because that makes.
Nice bit of color out there.
Well, it is kind of neutral without anything there, okay? And the other thing is the, I'm refurbishing the herb garden signs are going to go back up. And that whole area, there's, I want to move one of the benches. Mary Franzalia's bench wants to go there. Kim said that she told him that, so we'll go with that.
What are you trying?
It's very lush right now. I mean, I have plans for, plans to put rosemary in there and some annuals, but right now, the irises are all in blossom. And so one of the things I wanted to do is add something to cut down on the labor intensity of the trimming, is on either side of the arbors, to put small gardens there that would have things like marigolds and daylilies in it, so that they're not going to be high intensity, and there wouldn't be a lot of weeding either. So that's what's going to happen there. Before it gets hot.
Oops, that's this afternoon.
After, probably maybe tomorrow when it rains. That would be good.
All right, and the last thing for facilities is the plumber replaced faucets on the two ladies' room sinks.
Right, finally.
And then, you know, I'm thinking the men's room will probably need to get replaced eventually. One of them's sticking, but not bad. Not the way it was originally.
It was the fact that they kept running and running.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm keeping an eye on the men's room faucets, too, to see when we'll need to replace those. Lakeville day was really cold, and it rained about halfway through. So everybody ended up packing up around 1:30, so we just packed up as well. But it was nice to see a number of families stop by and play a few games. And we contacted the winners of the Wonder Books the next day. So we'll be closed June 19th for the holiday. Sales circulation meeting is at 10:00 a.m. today, next door. And then tech services will host their meeting from sales on Wednesday, June 5th. So I had Bob McNally stop in on Friday, May 17th to look around at our Wi-Fi access points and things. So he's going to get me a quote for new equipment for the access points. He's also going to look at two potential service providers to boost our bandwidth. And I have to call Comcast, so I'll try to do that this week or next to get a quote for how much it would be to get some increased bandwidth. Right now, I think we're sitting on around 35 to 40 megabits per second. And that's very, very low. We should probably think about having around 200. Bob even suggested 500 to a gig because of some of the programming we do here, especially the gaming ones.
I would think that would be really intense, yeah.
The fact that we have a lot of people walking in with laptops and devices, so.
Or sitting in the parking lot.
Yeah, and we have some computers, staff computers that are also running off of it, so it's important to increase.
Well, is it, would it make a difference in the charge, or what we?
There would be a financial cost depending on, he talked about putting us on the town. But if we do a virtual reality gaming program with six headsets, we don't want to choke up the town Wi-Fi. So he suggested that he would look at Verizon and TM, is it TMLP or whatever the town line is? So that we could maybe get on that as a separate, you know, pay for our own. They'll boost it for us, but we'll pay a portion of it to the town. What I was looking at for Comcast, I think they were advertising between $70 and $80 a month for. But I'll definitely get an official quote from them.
Where would that come in the budget?
So I was thinking it would have to come into state aid now if I wanted to do it soon, which I would like to do it soon, and then find a way to work it into the budget.
Would it be under, it wouldn't be contracted services, but it would be six-keeper subscription?
It could go under dues and subscriptions. That's mostly for the sales. But if it's something that's a monthly charge for service we provide to the public, I think that could go under dues and subscriptions. And that line is going to have to get bumped up next year anyway, because of the cap coming off of the sales. The sales.
Any questions?
Assessment.
Oh, yeah, assessment. Okay, so.
Yeah, and then just the Friends of the Library Matts. They're looking at getting new member t-shirts and talking about fundraisers. And then the gallery will have a new artist in June. Bob?
Okay. Policy list review, library programming and displays, possible vote?
Yes, so I gave it to you last time, and I wondered if anybody had any changes they wanted to make before we vote. I can put it off until next month as well, if we want to talk about some of the things in the programming and displaying policy.
There not any changes from what we spoke about at the last meeting?
This was just a. Most of this I copied from another, very programming display policy.
They copied ours for something else.
Most serious form of flattery.
I'll move that we accept this as written.
Second.
Any further discussion? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye. Motion passes, so we accept the library programming and display policy?
Of course, this will all have to go through town council at some point. It's going to be more than you to accept eventually.
The meeting room, the highlighted yellows?
The highlighted yellows are what I have changed in the current meeting room policy. So the community meeting room, where it says seats up to 120 people. I think it was at 140 or 150, which was actually overcapacity according to our.
Oopsie.
So I just put it down to what I actually counted for chairs that are available in that room. And then put the total room capacity at the end, just in case there are any questions. Because we have had some meetings that have gotten a huge crowd, particularly town meetings. And I don't think a lot of the community meetings necessarily get that big, but. Just wanted to point that out. And then some of the stuff I put into bold, so that it would be more prominent on the policy. So I just put in bold, it's understood that the gallery and local history room, it had been both, like all meeting rooms, may have dual functions, and I just took out "may" because they do have dual.
Yeah.
There's no question of that.
Right.
And then changing patrons to members of the public, just because I feel like patrons is kind of a library jargon word.
It also limits people that actually use our library, as opposed to infrequent use or regular use.
And then I added a line about town boards and committees, because they do executive session, just to let them know that they should let us know that we can help them. We can put up a do not disturb sign when they're doing their executive session.
That's a very good idea. Thank you for bringing that up.
And then, just to bold, meetings must end 15 minutes before closing. Haven't changed the time. The next change is down on confirming the meeting dates. Groups who use it on a continuous basis must renew their reservations at least once a year. I added the part "and confirm meeting dates," just in case there's any holidays that fall in a funny way.
That's a good point.
Just to make sure. And then confirm with the library director or designate, because I believe designate was listed in the first part of the policy somewhere. And then the next change would be that the library has the right to cancel, reschedule, or transfer meeting room location or dates that conflict with library-sponsored events or special events. In such cases, the library will give advance notice to the group contact. This was, I noticed when I went back to the original policy manual, something like this was in the meeting room policy. But I think it got condensed down to that, you know, the library would take precedence, and that was it. But I feel like it's better to say, we could move you to a different room if we feel necessary.
Do you have chat in there somewhere? Just trying to see something about, because we just did ours. And I remember the guy that did the workshop for the MBLC talked about making sure you had somewhere in their comments, like, not wording it right, but the library, just because you're holding a meeting here, doesn't mean that that's the library's viewpoint.
I think that's right in the front. Use the library meeting room by any group, and no one constitutes endorsement of the group's policies or activities. So that's already in there. I didn't change that.
And they can't put that in advertising either.
So I did that.
See that, yeah.
Change a little bit later. So under equipment use, I put, please ask the library director for a list of available equipment. And so what I did with the application, I didn't print it off, but I can for the next meeting. I just made a list of equipment they can use in both of these meeting rooms, like the television, the screen projector. So it'll be like an à la carte, check off what you need kind of thing. And then under responsibility and liability, you'll see the highlights. Any publicity must be cleared by the library director before distribution. Publicity must clearly state any program sponsorship and include group contact information. The library phone number and staff emails may not be used as contacts. There should be apparent on all publicity that the library is serving as a venue and not the sponsor. That came from, I was looking at the Morris Institute Libraries and thought it would be a good way to word that. And that's all the changes for the meeting room policy.
So we'll vote on this next.
Do you have anything, again, probably you have a copy scattered today? As far as, you know, or has that kind of covered the library, not, does not publicize your event or?
I could certainly add that there, that it won't be added to our newsletter or events. Well, it's added to the events calendar, but it's not.
Yeah, well, like I'm trying to figure that one out, because I just remember the MBLC had the workshop. I don't know if you were on that or not.
No, I didn't.
And the lawyer talked about, that they had doing it, talked about how, which has been really hard. If it's not a library event, so for us, like the, well, the garden club wants me. It's not a library event, but we can't advertise. We can't promote that event. I mean, there's a community bulletin board, get drawn up there type of thing.
And the garden club does their own publicity.
And the reason being is because you can't, I don't know, if the worst group you can imagine wanted to meet here, and you can't keep them out, but they see you've advertised for the garden club. Well, then you have to advertise for there.
Right, you've already set a precedent, so.
So I, I mean, I don't have an answer on that one, as far as, like, I know on the events calendar, I have it on our website, just to show the rooms in use, because people book in the room, look at the calendar to see if the room might be available. And the only thing I've come up with right now is like, you know, I don't know, garden club, not a library event. Although I did see, I think Sandwich does private event. And they just, they just listed as private event, which I don't know how I feel on that one either.
With the private event, then that kind of makes it so if someone did want to go into the local book, and there's a private event in here.
Well, I think theirs, I haven't talked to them, I think theirs is just not a library event. So they're not promoting it, they're just, it's a.
Maybe not a library-sponsored event.
I mean, that's what I can do, just not a library event, but.
Because then you're saying that people, for instance, the dual-use rooms, people can't come to the, if they come here specifically to see something in that, and that room is a private event, then they're not allowed to go in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that.
No, but I mean, that would seem to be the implication would be that.
Somewhere in the, in the policy, we may just want to put specifically as far as not advertising.
Or instead of doing it that way, on the library-sponsored events, put library-sponsored event. And if it's blank, then the assumption is it's not?
Yeah, I think, I mean, that's fine. I was just thinking more in the policy that we don't.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure you get, I mean, I get the groups that come in, and they're perfectly fine, but, you know, you get chewed out for not, you didn't publicize my event. It wasn't a library event.
You're right.
We were a venue, as opposed to a.
Maybe I could work in here on this line, groups are responsible. Maybe it could go in the front. Groups are responsible for advertising their own events.
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think which library I use, because like you, I just, I feel like mine was Westboro and Beverly. Because that is how librarians do things. We find those that did it better.
You take their language, and they're like, this is great. Then you come to the meetings, and you give your bibliography, and we say, thank you very much, whoever gave it to us.
We thank all libraries that we have borrowed. Okay, so do you want to do more input on this one and bring it back next month?
Yeah, if you want to redo it next month, then just.
So this one, the policy will be in June?
Yep.
And you'll see, when we get our packet, you'll know whether or not there's anything we want to make an adjustment to.
Yeah.
Okay, so thank you so much for doing that. So now we're going to go into old, our new business. If there is no further information or. Need you to change the order and do the, do the election last? And then that way, we will get through the closure and database additions.
Sure.
Okay, so is there a motion to change the order of old new business and move, select the new slate of officers at the bottom of that, and move closure for staff and database additions up?
Some would.
Second? Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye. It passes. Okay, so, okay, closure for staff.
I have a memo for you. I can read it through for you if you'd like. So to the trustees, for a staff meeting scheduled during, scheduled during work hours. I'm requesting an early closure on Wednesday, June 12th at 4:00 p.m. in order to hold a staff meeting. This should not affect our hours, open hours requirement for state aid certification, as we are open 42 hours per week. Though we are required to be open 42 weeks notice, should be enough time to alert patrons to the change in closing time and get the word out on all media channels. Most of the staff are available for June 12th, though an alternate date could be June 5th, a little sooner. Costs will be incurred only for part-time staff that are able to attend. It would hold it outside, if I were to hold it out of, outside of operating hours, we would incur overtime expenses for full-time staff as well as part-time employee wages. So agenda items will include summer reading overview from Teresa from the children's room, checking in with the newer staff members, and updates about the end of the fiscal year. As summer reading will start June 18th, I'd like to hold this meeting in early June. And thank you for your consideration.
Move to support the letter of May 22nd? It's in view of the second? Any further discussion? No, I think this is really good. And I think that from time to time, this needs to be done.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion passed. You going to have food?
I was going to feed them, so yeah.
You're going to feed them?
Yeah. I don't know what yet, but I will. Okay. Moving on to database additions. Madam trustee?
Yes, we're going to, so, database additions discussion and a possible vote.
So I was looking at Canopy Plus, which Jamie had thought about adding before she left. That is the streaming video service. It offers packages, typically Canopy is a pay-per-circ model. But they also do offer packages that are similar to a database that are always on offer to people. So I contacted the representative. They were having a discount pricing model.
Nice.
So I wanted to pick two. Staff thought the three choices right there, there's more choices, but they thought the British cinema definitely would be a hit. Easy watching and our favorites would be a good second edition. So if I add two, it's going to be $800 if we purchase it by the end of the month.
My question is, what is British cinema? Is it films or television?
Films, it's like the tele, it's like the BBC series, and then some films.
Okay, so easy watching?
Is some of the rom-coms and some of the comedies.
Comedies, and then favorites?
And then favorites would be a mix of everything.
Well, then I think if you wanted to get the most availability for different types of patrons, favorites would be one of them.
Yeah, so we could do British cinema and favorites.
Yeah, yeah, I'd do.
Lot, be a broader, um, mix of stuff, so I would suggest that one, but on the other two.
Watching is in favorites.
I think there's some overlap.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think on the other one is pretty much up to whatever.
British cinema, I think, if the staff believes that that would be.
It's like the Miss Marbles and the.
Uh, yeah.
Sort of like brick box then.
Brick, very much like brick box.
All right.
Okay, so.
S- um, so you're looking at that, are you also looking at the other part or is that another section of this?
So that's a separate database.
So do you, would you like us to vote on this?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Would we need to vote on that?
Um, cause something new and what's gonna pack budget?
And it, we would enter into a contract.
Right.
Okay.
Contracted services, is this what it would come out into?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think we need to vote.
I mean, it is provided through Overdrive, but I still have a contract here I would need to add on.
Okay. So we have, um, Canopy Plus, the director will select two areas and it will cost us eight hundred dollars and we're getting a special discount before, if we do it before the end of the month, which is the thirty-first.
So.
Is there a motion to go with Canopy Plus?
Um, so.
Okay, further discussion? You think it's gonna tag on to one of our things?
So, Overdrive offers it, I guess they bought out a lot of things.
Yeah, but it's separate.
It's kind of separate, yeah.
But it's a, it's a section of this particular thing, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go for it.
Okay, great.
And now Morning Star Investment Center?
Morning Star Investment Center, yes. If you didn't get a chance to look at it, it's very detailed information about stocks, investment portfolios, ETFs, and, um, just investment planning, say for college. Um, our representative, Fanny, was, you know, showing me a lot about it and I feel like it's easy to use. And I sent the trial out to a lot of people, I sent it out to the staff, I also sent it out to department heads and I got feedback from one department head who said she really liked it. It was, it was, um, somebody who's in finance, so she thought it was great, but I don't know how much it would get used here. You know, I'm not sure, you know, that's why I was kind of asking, do you feel like this community needs financial information? Are they looking for financial information? Um, so I got some numbers from Fanny and you'll see that it's quite expensive if you get the unlimited seats, which is, you know, anybody can use it at any time. If we go with two licenses, only two people can be on at the same time.
And that's only here too, right?
Um, no, that's from home.
They, online they can do it?
Yeah.
Access to their.
Yeah, they can access it here and they can access it at home.
So what would happen if you wanted to go on and some, but, and the two licenses were being used? Would it say try again later?
Would it say try again later, yeah.
When they're on a, do they have a time limit? Or they just, until they're finished?
Until they're finished.
Okay.
That's a good question for her though.
So they never log out?
There's always.
I don't have it, I, I.
I imagine it, just kind of kicks you out though.
Wouldn't be one that would use it, so it's not something I've looked into.
Did you use it in your other library?
Plymouth used it. Mad boys.
Big library, yeah.
And was it, was it popular in Plymouth, was it?
There were a number of people who wanted investment information, so they liked having not only when they did the print stuff. Um, so they would come and look at the, um, value line print stuff, they'd also want the Morning Star and I think it had been a patron suggestion when we ended up adding it in Plymouth.
I wonder if we, instead of asking department heads, ask patrons, put up a sign or put in the newsletter. Is this something that interests you? If it is, please tell a staff member or send us an email.
Yeah.
And see if we get any response.
And then after we've, if we do do that and we decide at another date to go with that, we'd also wanna evaluate whether or not, how much use it's getting? Do they let you know that?
Yes.
How many?
You get stats.
And it's a one-year, uh, contract.
I wonder if you can get feedback from the website since people would be logging in anyway.
Right.
Instead of.
Oh, I could ask her about that.
Log in, you can.
Well, I'm just thinking, instead of a note at the desk here, I would just have it on the website because people would be using it, would be logging in anyway, so they're comfortable.
That would be your, your group of people would be people who are computer savvy.
Like I said, my libraries, it's just not something that would get used enough for the cost, but.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this group, this community kind of wants financial information.
Well, I feel like anybody who has investments probably has somebody advising them on their investments, so might not personally want to take on that, but.
I, so then the suggestion would be that we do something online to, to let people know we're considering it? And that we need feedback by a certain deadline date?
Yeah, so our trial, I think, runs through next week. She extended it a month. I don't know if I can ask for another extension, but maybe I could put up on the website like try a database this weekend or something.
Yes.
And direct message us for the credentience.
On Memorial Day weekend, but they may do it like June, in June or something.
Yeah, I can, we could get an extension, um.
Okay, so you'll see if you can get that an extension and then we'll see if we, how much response we get to that and then in June we'll make a decision.
Did anybody on the staff indicate they were interested?
Pam seemed excited about it when I mentioned it, cause I think she's interested in learning more about investing and I have been looking at, you know, there's been a lot more um, print material focused on women in investments, so I've been trying to get some of those.
Have we had any programs on investing?
So I've had a couple.
We did have some, didn't we?
I had a couple of companies call to use the meeting room, which if you look back at the policy, it says they can't do workshops as a business, but we can maybe do, talk to the library director about doing a program. So nobody is called back to say, hey, can we do a program? I think they all wanna do their own thing.
So that they come in and they charge a fee?
Well, they don't charge a fee, but they're like, oh, free seminar on retirement investing and then they hand out their business cards and talk about their products.
Well, usually you get some at a restaurant for that.
They've had someone, I think, at the COA doing something.
And I wouldn't mind doing it with these people that have contacted me, but they never, I send them the policy and the meeting room application and then they never.
Well, maybe we could see how well received it is at the COA.
I'm gonna go over there, I have to go get a key, so I'll ask, talk to Lori, as usual.
Uh, yeah, I did share, you know, Lori being part of the department heads could have shared it with, and I did mention it, I think, in the department heads email to share it with anybody who they think might have an interest in financial information.
It might have been wills that I'm thinking or something like that. I can't remember now, I just vaguely saw.
Usually I try to get all like the no low books about wills and trusts and things too.
Okay, so that will put this one off, we'll have, have it on the June agenda as discussion and a possible vote and see if we have enough feedback. Is there any other older new business that we need to discuss before we do the slate of officers?
I did put in your packet, um, one more thing. So going back to our discussion of upholstery cleaning, I did get, finally got a quote from another company and his, isn't listed out as nicely as, um, Stanley Steamer's, but he charges fifteen dollars for task chairs, whereas Stanley Steamer was ten. Um, the armchairs, he is a little lower, he's forty dollars versus fifty dollars. Love seats at fifty dollars each and, um, Stanley Steamer was seventy-nine each. And then the wooden chairs with just the upholstered seats, um, Stanley Steamer was five, he was ten. Total is a little bit less for Josh than for Stanley Steamer. And I don't know if you wanna move forward with having them cleaned, we did just have a very awful toner incident where one of the task chairs was covered in magenta from an explosion. A brand new toner too, it was very sad.
Things happen like that, it's like gremlins.
It was magenta everywhere.
Well, I think, if, to my knowledge, we've never cleaned them. It's time, we're, we're due to do this, so in, under maintenance, it needs to be done. Um, and.
Have you checked, um, reviews for Josh's?
Not yet. I know Stanley Steamer, I actually got to, one of the friends had had them over, so I said, how did you like their service? And she said they were great. Um.
They did well in my house with upholstery, but I wasn't thrilled with their carpet and, and, um, floor cleaning.
Yeah.
So. That might be, cause you have to do it more often than I do it. But they did well with the upholstery.
But yeah, I can check for reviews on Josh.
Is he local?
He is local.
Is this something you need a vote on or?
Uh, well, it's over.
Would you like a vote on?
Do we have enough information to vote on it?
I could get a third quote.
Okay, why don't we do that? Why don't we get, put this on the June agenda and to make a decision and have it done?
Isn't there somebody in Lakeville who used to do carpets?
Yeah, um, Eddie Beach was, um, he's, he's cleaned all of our carpets on a regular basis at some point.
I'll look, it was, um, Josh was the most local one, I think.
Okay, he may be retired, I don't really know.
I wanna say he's Middleborough or, I'd have to look again, but he was very close.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's, we're gonna have a change of leadership, it should have taken place last month, we didn't have it on the agenda. Usually we do it after the, um, election in April at our next board meeting. So we're going to entertain a motion to change the leadership, we do this on a rotating basis, so it's in the best interest of the library. Also, each of us get to develop a relationship with the director and everybody gets to be spokesman and point person and so if something should happen and one of us is no longer here, nothing will slip through the cracks, well, I'll be aware of what's going on. So, rotation would be Ruth Gross as chair, Patrick Marshall as secretary, and myself as treasurer. Is there a motion to accept the slate as mentioned?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? We are all able to serve, continue to serve? All those in.
Are there nominations from the floor?
There's nobody else, what else? So, all those in favor of the slate as presented?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll hand over the, the gavel to you, so you was, Ruth will take the minutes for this meeting, but Patrick will start in June and as of now, you are now the new chair.
Well, thank you very much.
Nancy, did you wanna mention the lost and found?
Yes, I do wanna mention that before we set the date for the next meeting. Have you put the pictures online yet?
They were on earlier this year.
The Lakeville Public Library had an abundance of lost and found items and so the staff and the director have gone through things and they have posted pictures and they have given you a deadline of.
Oh, it passed.
It passed? It was last month?
Yeah, it was like February, March.
Oh, February, March, this happened, but one unique item has been found somewhere in the box, so we don't know exactly when.
Nope.
It is a very old Massachusetts automobile register. Eleven seventy-nine or one thousand one hundred seventy-nine. If it belongs to someone and they have proof that this was their license plate, we would be more than willing to gift it back to you if it was lost. Otherwise, it will probably go to the Lakeville Historical Commission who will then find a home between here and the museum for it. So one way or another, it will no longer be here.
No.
But we will give you, we air, we're on air right now, so people might be aware, but you might wanna mention this. And we'll give you till June fifth to make a claim. After June fifth, it will go to a secure place. Next meeting, is anyone going to be away?
I'm never going away again.
You really?
Cause I get sick.
Okay, okay, we've been meeting the fourth Wednesday.
Till I go away again.
Which would be, uh, the twenty-sixth. Does that work or?
Uh, it's working.
How about you?
It's fine with me. We can go back to nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock? And at that meeting, it will be the six months probationary period will be up. And so one of the agenda items will be, um, our response to that. Okay, that's like a mini evaluation type thing. So, I would think that the chairman probably will send out a thing for, for feedback from any members of the board of trustees.
Do I need to do an evaluation with Jennifer?
It's just a probation.
Okay.
Not a full evaluation. But we don't want you to be worried. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Lake Cam.